All right, good evening, everyone. I will call this Tiger City Council to order. City Recorder Crager, would you please conduct a roll call?
Youth Councilor Hellick.
Here.
Councilor Gudusi.
Present.
Mayor Hu.
Here.
Councilor Robbins.
Here.
Councilor Slack.
Here.
Unable to attend, Council President Wolf.
All right, so will everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, everyone. Council and city staff, do you have any non-agenda items?
None from us, Mayor.
All right, seeing none, let's move on to the public comments. So, I'm supposed to say that public comment is not dialogue. Either I or the staff will follow up to address the issue brought forward in these comments. The calling number is (503) 966-4101, and those wishing to comment should call now to get into the queue. Anyone present wanting to comment should sign up on the public comment form at the front of the room. We receive no written comments by the Monday noon deadline, and for in-person comments, we have three people sign up. So when I call your name, please come forward and turn on the mic and state your name and your city residence, and after that, you will have two minutes. So the first person I will invite up to speak is Alfred John Nicholas Brummer. Alfred?
Hi.
Hi, welcome. Not yet. You can take a seat if you want.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Thank you, by the way, all of you. I appreciate your time. I'm here on, I read an article in the newspaper recently about the new park that will be going in, and you guys wanted some comments and suggestions for the park. My younger brother, back when they started the plans for the skate park that you have right outside the doors here, was on the design team initially, and it was supposed to go at Fowler Junior High. There was a Phase One, and there was a Phase Two. Well, that ended up getting the kibosh because of the endangered turtle that was found and protected the land. So they ended up going here and had to have some changes to it. And I have a daughter, and I got into jewelry there, and then I also got into fossils because of the jewelry influence. So I started getting into fossils and learned that turtles were rampant around here, and this area was a set of islands. And I've learned a lot of history about it. And my suggestion is that it's kind of a larger issue. I think we should start something called like the Westside Skate Pipeline, where the Rock Creek and Pedo Trail that now connect, they already go by several skate parks. And if we can add in as many little small skate parks along the way, we could make it just a one, a whole trip people could make, you know, hitting skate park after skate park down the trail. And I think something in the summer would be great, bring a lot of, you know, a lot of people here, and it would be great. I'd suggest that not only the pickleball courts, the basketball courts, and a barbecue area with, you know, covered picnic tables to go in the park, but also maybe a Phase Two that we didn't have because of the change because of the turtle. And in such, make a turtle shell in the park that spins, and then maybe has like a tail that likes, is like a grind bar, and the feet could be like kicker ramps. But it doesn't have to be something huge, but it maybe can go along the lines of the original blueprint, which my brother actually has. He said he was gonna pull it up for me. So if you guys decide to maybe do something like that, we can get the original blueprints.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
All right, before I go on to the next person for comment, Mr. Thonberg, could you put a two-minute timer on the screen? All right, while he's working on it, I have my own timer here, so we can go on to the next person. So next person, oh, it's almost there, it's two. While he's working on it, Ted? Ted Guren?
Yes.
Hi, Ted. Welcome.
This is my first time being in one of these or speaking in one of these, so.
Yeah, I will keep, I will keep a timer for two minutes, so.
That's fine. I don't have too much to say, so.
All right, please go ahead. Oh, now it's on.
So my name is Ted Guren. I've been a Tigard resident for about 12 years now. Bought my house in Tigard because it was a nice place to live, clean, safe, like Portland was about 12 years ago. I live right on the Phantom Creek Trails, which my wife and my seven-year-old daughter walk to the library, to the farmer's market regularly, especially in the summers and nicer months. And that walk is very different in the past four or five years now. Having to walk through trashed wildlife preservation areas, homeless people sleeping in trash bags and library steps, and of course, the camping that's happening right here in front of the Public Works, which has gotten a little bit better, but I think it's the weather influencing the summer months. Without anything changing, it's gonna get right back to the disaster it was before. So what I'm here to ask is the council to consider to make camping illegal and get these homeless people out of here. This seems like a very doable thing, but I understand for some people it might seem like a radical idea. So I offer a compromise. Let's at least hold them accountable on the same standards that regular taxpayer citizens are being held accountable for. Just the other day, I got a training ticket on the red light on Hall and 99. I didn't stop for the full four seconds. Right before that, I drove past the Public Works Building, where there was tents, trash, and people still out there past the curfew hours that you guys set forth in your camping rules. My question to you is why are the people that pay taxes, work, and try to be contributing members to society have to follow different set of rules that the people here on the street don't have any rules, don't have any repercussions? If the council can't put an end to this, then at least start enforcing the rules that you yourselves put onto the board in front of there. Camping is set from certain hours, has to be done in certain hours. There's been people there nonstop. People are not leaving now. There's trash all over the place. The sidewalks are blocked. It's just becoming a disaster. So that's kind of my question to you guys is why do we have double standards for people that are law-abiding citizens that are trying to do the right thing versus the people here that don't follow your own rules, so.
Thank you, Ted. So either I or the staff will get back to you on your question. All right. So I have Joey, and I can't read your last name, so sorry.
No, that's fine. It's word.
Okay. So welcome, Joey.
Thank you. It is also my first time coming to one of these meetings.
Yeah, welcome.
But it's a same, same concern as Ted had. You know, it's, bought my place, oh, close to it, 20 years ago here in Tigard. And the, you know, feeling unsafe in the quality of life that we had when we bought our place was as much different than the feeling that you have now. Outsiders, you know, maybe never been to Tigard, driving through wouldn't know the difference, but I know that it's kind of overwhelming on the police force, for one. You know, I know that when the homeless or the houseless population has to leave the established campground, they have to go somewhere, and obviously, it's not gonna be too far, which then goes into the neighborhood of the surrounding communities. Then, of course, you know, there's concerned citizens with people that are camping right in their neighborhood throughout the workday. So, you know, I understand that everybody needs help. One at a time out there when they're on the street, there's a reason for that. And, you know, I know that there's the Compassion Center that was put in on Hall, not too far from the campground. But I think the quality-of-life approach must kind of go both ways, from the citizens that do own homes and live here, and not even own homes. You know, just whoever lives in Tigard inside, you know, it's kind of overwhelming, it seems like, the amount of homeless people in comparison to the surrounding cities. I don't know how many other municipalities allow, you know, camping outside of them, but the ones I've driven past in the close communities don't have any camping signs and any ability to do that. So my question is, is there an end in sight? And is there going to be a time where we take that board down and just use the facilities that we have paid for and in place, and not so much outside?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else who wanted to speak but haven't signed up yet? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the phone or video comment. Mr. Thonberg, are there any callers in the queue for either phone or video testimony?
There's one caller.
I'm sorry, did you say there's one caller? There's one caller, okay. Your volume is very low, so when you are ready, please patch in the one caller.
All right, and they're ready to go now.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
It's very weak, so I don't know if you can speak up.
I'm so sorry. Is this all right? I can also just write in if that's easier. This is Lisa Gess-Mutler. I'm just calling about the River Terrace 2.0 annexation. And just calling in support, but I can write in if it's hard to hear me.
Is it so loud now? So can you hold on on the line, so we'll ask for your, we'll ask for your testimony when it's time, when I open the public hearing for that, for the annexation. Is that okay?
Of course, yeah. I wasn't sure, I thought I'd call in right away because I wasn't sure when the right time would be. That's fine.
All right, so I will call you when we get to the hearing, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next item is the city manager report, and our interim city manager Trish will give a brief report.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, members of the community. I am pleased to provide an update on this Giving Tuesday. A month ago in these chambers, council decided to donate $10,000 of their own funds to support food security in our community. Thanks to matching donations from residents and businesses, we saw the impact of this donation double. Packed with Pride received $20,000 just before Thanksgiving, with the majority of funds coming in right after council's announcement to match donations. Packed with Pride, Bethlehem House of Bread, Twalton Food Pantry, and other food and service providers welcomed continued donations through the holiday season and beyond. Monetary donations are especially valuable because they allow our partners to purchase exactly what's needed. And if you're donating food, please ensure items are within their expiration dates. I wanted to provide three other brief donation updates because it is the season of giving. Tigard residents made a big impact also through the city's Fall Leaf Disposal Food Drive, with 20 barrels of food collected so far for Tigard's St. Vincent de Paul. And with two more drop-off dates ahead on December 6th and 13th, there's still time for people to participate. Tigard Youth Advisory Council held a men's clothing drive for discompassion, collecting approximately 300 pounds of clothing. And here at City Hall, staff collected non-perishable food items as well, bringing in a barrel and some change for, to support food security. Finally, Tigard Public Library's Basic Needs Bookshelf is gearing up for winter with their supply drive. Throughout December, community members can donate shelf-stable snacks and new socks, hats, gloves, and hand warmers. These donations can be dropped off in person on Fridays from 10:00 a.m. till noon, or online using the Basic Needs Bookshelf's Amazon wishlist. We're grateful for the support of so many helping our local service providers, and the need remains steady. Thank you for the generosity of our community, truly helping everyone in Tigard. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to the legislative public hearing for River Terrace 2.0 annexation. I will open the public hearing. And here's a special announcement for the public hearing. To afford time for staff to respond to recent comments received from our regional government, staff has provided counsel with a recommendation to continue the annexation hearing for River Terrace 2.0 to February 24, 2026 at 6:30 p.m. in order to give the city staff to address these comments. The public hearing for case number NAX 2025-00001 is continuing to the regularly scheduled city council meeting on February 24, 2026 at 6:30 p.m. Public comments may continue to be submitted on this item prior to that date, and the council will take public testimony in the continued hearing on that date. So caller on the line, I apologize for the mix-up, but since we are continuing the hearing to February 24, 2026, we will not take your comment today regarding the annexation. But as I stated, please continue to submit testimony, written testimony before that date, or feel free to call us back on February 24, 2026. Again, apologize for the mix-up, and I thank you for calling in. Have a good evening. All right, so that's going on to the quasi-judicial public hearing regarding Sanders' property annexation zone change and comprehensive plan map change. I will open the public hearing. The calling number is (503) 966-4101, and those wishing to comment for this public hearing should call now to get into the queue. Anyone present wanting to comment should sign up on the public comment form for agenda item number five at the front of the room. So I will invite City Attorney Rahala to read the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. This is a quasi-judicial land use proceeding. Council's decision must be based on the following substantive criteria. The approval standards for annexation are described in Community Development Code Chapters 18710, 18720, and 18910, Comprehensive Plan Goal 1, Goal 11, Goal 12, and Goal 14, Metro Code Chapter 3.09, and Oregon Revised Statute Chapter 222. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed toward the relevant approval criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue clearly enough so that council understands and can address the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Failure of the applicant to object to a condition of approval may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. Members of the city council will be asked whether they have any conflicts of interest. If a council member has an actual conflict, the council member cannot participate. Council members must declare any contacts about this case with a member of the public. Council members must also declare if they have independent knowledge of the relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. A council member who describes ex parte contacts or independent information shall state whether the contact has impaired his or her impartiality or ability of the member to vote.
So council member, do you have any conflict of interest or any prior contact? No? So none of us have. And the next part is declarations or challenges. So I'm supposed to ask anyone who challenges the jurisdiction of council to speak now? Is that, I remember that from the planning commission days. So anybody who have challenged to our jurisdiction to hear the case, please speak now? All right, none? All right, so senior planner Lindor was joining us virtually, and Assistant Community Development Director Warren will give us the staff report. Welcome.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Agnes Lindor, senior planner in the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is the Sanders annexation. Next slide, please. The proposal is to annex one property, approximately 4.7 acres, into the city of Tigard for sewer connection. There's no other development that is proposed. As you can see here on this map, the property is located just east of River Terrace, which is that orange area that's in the city limits, south of Palermo Lane, and north of Colony Place. Upon annexation, the site would be zoned Res C. Staff, including the Engineering and Public Works Divisions, reviewed the proposal and have determined that there are adequate public facilities to serve, and they're available to serve the site. Additionally, as outlined in the staff report, the proposal meets the Tigard Development Code, the Tigard Comprehensive Plan, the Metro Code, and the Oregon State Statutes. Next slide, please. Based on this, Planning Commission recommends that city council approve the annexation, and staff concurs with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, do you have any questions for our staff? Seeing none, oh, Council Robin, just question right now. No opinions, so please go ahead.
Just a quick question. I thought when I was reading it last night that it was .4 acres, but you said 4.7 acres, so could you just verify that it's 4.7?
It's .47, yes. I apologize for that. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? All right, seeing none. Is the applicant here to testify? I don't see the applicant, so let's move on to public testimony. We receive no written comment regarding this case by noon Monday. Mr. Thonberg, are there any caller in the queue to provide testimony on this item?
None at this time.
City Recorder Crager, do we have anybody signing up for this?
No one signed up to speak.
All right, so there's no response from staff for this. So I will close the public hearing on this case, and counsel deliberations. Counsel, any comments or motions?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-07.
I'll second.
The motion's being made, and second, are there any discussions? Seeing none, will the city recorder read the number and the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance number 25-07, an ordinance annexing one parcel of land totaling approximately .47 acres, approving the Sanders annexation, ZCA 2025-00001, and withdrawing properties from the Tigard Water District, Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, and Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District.
Will the city recorder please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilor Gudusi.
Yes.
Mayor Hu.
Yes.
Councilor Robbins.
Yes.
Councilor Slack.
Yes.
And Council President Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. All right, so let's move on to the next item, which is Legislative Agenda 2026 Discussion. Assistant to the City Manager Hendricks and interim city manager Trish will give staff report. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nicole Hendricks. I'm the assistant to the city manager, and yes, I'm joined by Emily Trich, our interim city manager. Next slide, please. So tonight, we're gonna seek your guidance on the adoption of the 2026 legislative agendas. So our recommendation is to adopt the state agenda based on the recommended information in your meeting packet, as well as to continue the federal agenda from 2025. Along the same lines, we're also asking council to consider changing the cadence of the federal agenda so that we adopt once every two years rather than every year, just to allow for more time to pursue the agenda items that we set. Next slide, please. So when we develop kind of the recommendations that go into your packet, we get advice from our CFM advocates who are our legislative consultants. We also seek feedback from council when we develop, and also our internal team members, our subject matter experts, as well as other regional partners, all guided by our city's vision and values. Next slide, please. So for the state legislative agenda for 2026, what we're proposing is a focus on three areas: transportation, housing, and homelessness. And again, those more specific items are listed in the PowerPoint and available in the packet. And then for the federal legislative agenda, it's, there's a graphic on the next slide, please. And this is just a picture of our last agenda, which really focuses on the project and program-specific funding requests, and then also on transportation and infrastructure. So the edits we would make, of course, is just any picture updates and things like design, design updates for the federal agenda. And then with that, I think I'll look to interim city manager Trich if you have anything else to add or any details to share.
We await your direction. Thank you.
So I'll look to you all for some direction on the state and federal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the federal agenda, my preference would be to continue approving it annually. I understand the rationale for approving it biannually, but I think considering how fluid the state of the federal government is lately, I think it's important to make sure that we're atop of that, as well as our priorities can shift from year to year. In particular, I would love to see the priorities from 2025, which are over-year-old, a bit more refined, to focus on the current community needs. And that way, we can better direct our limited resources on lobbying efforts. That would be my preference for the cadence of federal, as well as I'd like to just see a refresh of the federal agenda before it's approved. Regarding state, I agree with almost all the points on here. I'd love to explicitly pursue amendments to SB 974 for housing, just because that eliminated a lot of the ability of local governments to have influence over planning decisions. So whether that looks like a carve-out from municipalities who meet certain criteria regarding affordable housing or an outright repeal, I'm open on those points. And that's something I raised when our legislators came to City Hall earlier this summer, as well as a concern of mine. And then if we are going to pursue adding additional flexibility to HB 3115, I would like to have a little more definition as far as what sort of flexibility we're looking at, because I know there's a lot of people who want to address that particular law. I know OBI in particular is wanting to just repeal it outright, so I'd like to have a more defined position from the city of Tigard's perspective if we are seeking amendments. Working on my brevity. Those are my few points. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Interim city manager Trish, please.
Thank you very much. I'd love to respond to the.
I'd love to respond to those comments. Thank you, and if council directs us to do annual federal legislative agendas, we're happy to. For the legislative agenda, for the federal, for the federal agenda for this year, we'd look to you for guidance on areas of focus in order to direct what specific community focus areas you'd like us, so that we can refine that document appropriately. With regard to the state agenda, you called out House Bill 3115. We recognize there are opportunities to improve House Bill 3115 to better serve the needs of cities. If council adopts this legislative agenda recommending a revision to that bill, staff would advocate for state leaders to review the rule in consultation with local leaders to improve its practicability, and recognizing that a repeal of that bill could have adverse impacts to communities like ours that are resource hubs, and as cities like Portland perhaps encourage houseless community members to leave, they might turn to cities like ours who might face an undue burden and have to respond with enforcement. So measuring the practical, the compassionate, and mitigating our response was the justification behind the recommendation in the agenda.
Does that answer your question? Is that the direction you are satisfied with?
I'm satisfied with the rationale for revision versus anything further than that. I would still like to see further refinements to the legislative agenda if there is a majority of the council that wishes to pursue that.
For both the federal and state, or just the federal?
Just for federal.
Okay.
And then for state, I'd like to have a more explicit policy regarding SB 974.
974, okay.
Yes.
All right, that's good, okay. Council president Wolf, please go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, and I appreciate councillor Schlag's comments, and I'll start with federal because I supported the idea of let's just revisit that every other year to focus, but I appreciate it coming back to say, is there something that needs to be refined? And I think what would be really helpful is if we're looking at it that way, to have as part of the annual presentation, where are we on accomplishing those federal goals? Because then it really sets the stage for a conversation, you know, is this progressing in a way we want? Should we, you know, prioritize differently or maybe not pursue? But I like the idea of coming back, not with the idea of blowing it up and starting over, but what's working well, what's not, and how do we refine it? And I do have a question about 974, because I know that the city was very active in that advocacy. So maybe a rationale, like why wouldn't we advocate for that as well, if that makes sense? And I'll look to you, interim city manager. Thank you.
Sure, thanks for the question. I, I think we would be happy to advocate for a repeal or a change to SB 974, and I'd also invite assistant community development director Skylar Warren, who's been our resident expert on this matter. I think our city, like others, were surprised by the passage of this bill, which it's been called a shot clock, which really reduces the ability of cities and commissions to review planning decisions adequately and puts quite a burden on city staff. I'll invite Mr. Warren to comment.
Yes, there's, this is one of those multi-part bills that has a lot of follow-on impacts. The first is that shot clock that applies to engineering. The problem with the way the bill was written, and this has been acknowledged in the guidance that's been issued by the state related to the bill, is that it does not distinguish between engineering review by the city and engineering review that's handled by outside agencies, for example, Clean Water Services, who does engineering review on any development project that, you know, comes into the city of Tigard. We, it's not clear whether we are responsible for the time that they take. Other cities have brought this up to the state, and they have stated that, you know, yes, the bill does not make it clear, but of course, state administrative staff are not going to make an interpretation outside of what the plain language of the statute is. So there are those technical items that are problematic, the shot clock itself is problematic. There's also the removal of the Planning Commission from discretionary planning decisions such as up zones for housing development, as well as plan development, which of course, as the council knows, plan development is one of those super discretionary processes where we're essentially waiving large elements of the development code in exchange for public benefit, and it's that weighing of factors and the, whether the public benefit is concomitant with the flexibility that's being requested, that is the purview of a commission like the Planning Commission. So there are also the removal of all design standards for housing development, which not only makes writing a development code a challenge, but it also undercuts some of the provisions that were in the earlier bill of 1537, which offered mandatory adjustments in exchange for affordability, for density, and other, you know, state targets, right? Because 974's removal of design standards was a broad application across all housing types. It's no longer targeting those specified housing needs. So yes, I think staff would concur that 974 at the very least needs some technical fixes, but we would support, yes, a request for a full repeal.
So then I guess as a follow-up, I support councillor Schlag, but I also wonder if it should be modifications. I don't know that we could successfully get a repeal across the finish line, but it does certainly sounds like there's concrete components that should be corrected and amended. So that's my take on it.
Thank you. Councillor Robyn, any comments? Are you okay with adding Senate bill 974 and the House bill on the camping?
Yes, yes. I was reviewing the federal legislative agenda from 2025, and I'm just wondering, do we still support Southwest Corridor Light Rail? I mean, I kind of thought that that project was not going to happen, so are we still supporting it, or should I not ask those question?
I don't know what the city's official policy is, but I'm happy to go through the federal parts if we want to open up the refinement process, so.
So what do you propose? We do, I mean, I don't think we have enough time to go through all the federal thing point by point tonight, but.
So how about this as a proposal? Hearing the direction from some members of council, and maybe if the rest of you might concur or weigh in on this, staff can come back with a revised agenda that takes away projects that have already advanced, that we've already made progress in, or that have otherwise fallen off, and then come to you with just a revised version of that agenda without new additions unless we hear from you. So in one-on-one conversations, you can continue to give me your advice. The time element is really urgency around the state agenda. We do have the benefit of additional time on the federal agenda, so we need not feel rushed, and so we'd be happy to come back with you, to you in the new year with a revised federal.
But, yeah, but we can just approve the state tonight, right, with the two additional items that councillor Schlag proposed. Councillor Gudusi, do you have any issue with approving the state with the two proposal?
I have no issue.
All right, so it looks like we are ready to, we can make the motion to just approve this legislative agenda for the state for 2026 with the two items you mentioned. So councillor Schlag, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you. How specific do I need to be on those amendments?
General.
So it should be specific enough that the minutes will reflect the required changes?
You want to add Senate bill 974, right?
Yes, but you said two, and I was like, I don't recall a specific second one, or I'm just.
But you're okay with the one with the homeless, the camping?
Yes, I'm satisfied with pursuing a revision. I apologize if I did not clarify that upfront.
Okay, so you're okay with.
So, yeah, I move to approve the state legislative agenda for 2026, amended to pursue a repeal of SB 974.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I will start with youth councillor for advisory vote.
Aye.
Is there any discussion?
So we can go ahead and vote. I will vote no, because I don't think repealing will be impactful as modifications. So with all due respect, councillor Schlag, I just disagree, unless staff as the content experts, I just don't know that that would be effective, but maybe we can get amendments through. So that's my only strategy logic, so, but we can go for it.
Is that a question? I think you're correct that it's highly unlikely that appeal, that repeal would make it, given that it was one of the governor's marquee bills from last session.
I would be happy to revise my motion or withdraw and repropose. I got a little too energetic just then.
Would you, would you like to withdraw your original vote?
Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my original motion, and I'd like to move to approve the state legislative agenda for 2026 with amendments such that SB 974 be further revisited and modified.
Second.
All right, so councillor president Wolf will second that. So again, youth councillor, may we have your advisory vote?
Also aye.
Okay, wonderful. Although, so those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? No, so the motion carries, so thank you. So come back with the legislative, for the federal one.
Got it.
Yeah, so thank you, councillor.
Thanks.
All right. All right, that's, next item is transient lodging tax, TLT, strategic plan development update, and we'll have our economic development manager Hauder, and Eco Northwest Project Director Petros, they will be giving us their staff report. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, councillors, city staff and guests. My name is Denell Hauder, Economic Development Manager for the city of Tigard, and with me today, I have our consultant from Eco Northwest. I'll let you introduce yourself.
Good evening, Cadence Petros.
And we're here tonight to give you an update on the work that was commenced earlier this year regarding the development of a TLT, transient lodging tax framework. Next slide. Our goal for this update and our ask of council is the following. The project team's going to provide an overview of the environmental scan and the work that we did in our first workshop. We're looking for council to confirm alignment with the draft vision statement, the priority categories and their ranking that is a result of our workshop. And then also, we'll provide highlights of next steps and updated timeline, and looking for council to provide your feedback for any additional considerations in the development of the TLT framework. Next slide. We'll quickly go through the project scope, including background environmental scan, updates from the workshop that included the visioning process and outcomes. We'll cover the next steps and leave time for Q and A from council. Next slide. The project scope, as we identified last time we were here at the end of August, is the establishment of a strategic framework that will guide the city's use of transient lodging tax. Next slide. And for that, the content update, I will turn over to Cadence.
All right, thank you, mayor, councillors. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm going to just very briefly remind you about transient lodging taxes. The state statute sets strict rules for how those funds are both collected and disseminated, distributed, and we colloquially will call it the 70/30 rule, where 30% can be spent on general fund-like activities unrestricted, while 70% must be spent on tourism promotion or tourism-related facilities, which of course are defined terms. Next slide. So how can it be used? Tourism promotion is marketing, it's festivals, events, it's all about how do we attract tourists, visitors, and those are folks who are 50 miles away or more. Really, the idea is if you're going to be charging hotels and motels and Airbnb's a tax, let's, let's make sure that we are also promoting their industry, right? So it's geared towards getting visitors heads in beds, as they say. Then also tourism-related facilities, so that can be visitor centers, convention centers, arts and rec venues, particularly, right, those that are drawing from the region, not just your local community center, and other capital improvements that really are geared towards supporting tourism. Next slide, please. So when we conducted our environmental scan, we really wanted to start with how are you all spending TLT now? And essentially, in short, you take a fairly conservative approach, and you don't have a lot of structure around it, which is why you hired us to help you develop a framework. And one of the consequences of having this conservative approach without a whole lot of guidance on how to spend it is that you have a growing fund balance. So that's a good news, bad news story. The good news is, yay, you have some cash. The bad news is, you probably don't want to be sitting on it. You want to be putting it to efficient use, and so that's, that's what we're here to help talk about, how you might spend that going forward. You do use it for some events and recreation activities. You have your local TLT, which you adopted in 2017. It's generating about $750,000 a year. So that's a nice amount of money. It's not a giant amount of money, right? But that fund balance has been growing over time, and of course, you're following state statute and spending according to the 70/30 rule. Next slide, please. So like I said, you're getting about $750,000 a year. Obviously, the pandemic, you saw precipitously drop, but you're rebounding now, and you had about $766,000 in fiscal year '24. Your balance now exceeds $2 million. So it's been growing over time because you just haven't been spending it down on a year-by-year basis. And essentially, your spending is a little bit ad hoc, and really what we mean that is there's not, for all of the funds that come in, there's not a formal strategy. You do have a grants committee, that is a formalized process, you have, but for the totality of the funds that are coming in, there's no, there's no specific framework, and that's what we're here to talk about today. Next slide, please. So one of the things we wanted to do is not just look at how y'all are spending money, but also how do some peer cities throughout Oregon also spend their funds? And I'm not going to go into all of these details, because really I want to spend more time focused on the workshop and the outputs of that. But we interviewed several cities around this kind of region and state, and you can see on the left, the major use types, major facilities. An example is in Beaverton, the Patricia Resource Center for the Arts. All of their TLT funds are going for paying off the bond and the ongoing operations of that facility. Arts and culture, TLT can go into programming for the arts, whether it's events or other programming support, very easily tourism promotion and destination marketing, visitors associations, downtown associations, and then also economic development and city services. And so you have to be a little careful there, right? So of course, the 30% can go to any of the city services you want to. When you're working in that 70% blend, 70% restricted, you want to make sure that if you're supporting economic development, that it's really towards marketing your city and your downtown and your other regional draw. Next slide. Oh.
Cadence, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did, I will, at the risk of jumping in the weeds a little bit, on that last category, economic development and city services.
Yeah.
I'm kind of, thank you for the resource example, that paints a perfect picture for what Beaverton did.
Sure.
But what But what is an example of how you blend your economic development?
Sure. Can you go back one slide, please, just so we can all be?
Because it just helps me kind of just visualize and understand what that is.
So, some cities provide some of the economic development FTE is supported with transient lodging taxes, right? That's, I think, probably the most specific example, but then?
That helps, yeah. Because I'm, that helps.
Yeah, what are you even talking about?
What are you talking about?
So, then there's specific direct expenses, too. So, if you, for example, wanted to do a brand development strategy, that would be a TLT-eligible expense because you're trying to figure out how does the city market itself to those who are not from here, right? Okay, next slide, please. Yeah, no problem. Okay, so, there are a couple of ways that you could develop a strategy like this. You could hire me to say, this is what I think you should do, and, you know, you would get some pretty solid advice. But that's not what we elected to do this time. We really wanted to ensure that whatever recommendations came forth to you all really reflected the wisdom of your staff and also your key partners. And so, what we did was we held a very long workshop on the 18th of November to, with key staff from Parks and Rec, city manager's office, economic development, city attorney, thank you so much, and other, and then, of course, Megan DeSalvo from the visitor, the chamber, and Dave Perullo from Explore Tuolton Valley, really two anchoring key partners on how tourism and economic development can happen in the city of Tigard. So, we brought all those folks into the room. We gave them a longer version of the environmental scan to ground them in both how does TLT, what are the legal restrictions, what do other jurisdictions do, how is Tigard using it? And then, in order to sort of broaden the idea of what is possible, your city attorney was gracious enough to engage in a dialogue with me about what are the key legal considerations? Because of course, it's always fact-specific, and you're still going to need a city attorney guidance on individual expenditures, but really the idea was to get a better sense in the room about how those legal considerations and facts can line up so that they're better equipped to know whether they're in the ballpark or not, and how TLT expenditures or potential expenditures can be more likely to be TLT-eligible. And with that grounding, then, we went into essentially a consensus-building activity to derive the vision. And it wasn't a minutia wordsmithing experiment, but we did spend considerable time talking about the key words, the key ideas and values that are important in figuring out the vision. And then, we talked about spending categories. What are the key buckets of expenditures? Not the individual line items, because that's for a different time, but what are the buckets of expenditures, and then what are, and do any of those categories rise to the top? Are there any more important than others? And so, in the subsequent slides, we'll talk you through kind of what the results of that were. Next slide. So, the idea about a vision statement is, where are you trying to get to? Like, what's the point of having expenditure categories if you're not sure to what end you're trying to reach? And so, the vision statement is trying to paint a picture of the desired future state that you're aiming towards. Now, it is unlikely that you will get to that vision outcome in one year or two years. It may be 10 years or 20 years, but really, it's that North Star that you're aiming for. So, when you're thinking about individual expenditures in a budget process, and it fits in the category, but you can also cleave to the vision and say, is this really advancing the aims that we're trying to get to? And so, we, the process is individual reflection. We submit a question to the group. Think ahead five to 10 years. If you've used your TLT wisely and strategically, what's different, right? And so, we had people think about that, and they wrote their ideas down. Then they shared their ideas in small group, and then the small group shared out with the large group. And then, we did some more, you know, sticky note movement until we could come to some kind of general idea of what folks were thinking. And then, after that, really leaning into sort of the key words and the emphases, we talk a lot about vibes, like what were the vibes that were important to highlight in the vision? And then, the next slide. This is the result. And I do think I will, I'll just read it, you can read along. Through a thoughtful and balanced approach, supported by strong partnerships, Tigard uses TLT funds to attract visitors, strengthen a recognizable brand identity, and foster year-round experiences that highlight Tigard's recreation assets, entertainment offerings, and destination appeal in ways that benefit the community, businesses, and visitors alike. And I want to, I don't want to go into all of the pieces of that, but there was a couple highlights that I think are important. And the first is balanced approach. We had quite a lot of discussion of, do we want to put all of our eggs in one basket? And this comes into play especially when you're talking about facilities. If you want to build a new facility, you want to run a facility, right? That is, that approach would be putting all of your eggs in one basket, and quite frankly, $750,000 a year would be insufficient very likely. And so, balanced approach is kind of moving away from that and saying, actually, we want to use these funds in multiple areas. And so, you'll see, we have three strategic categories so that we can advance towards the vision more thoughtfully. Then, the next piece is strong partnerships. Tigard is not alone. Explore Tuolton Valley, the Chamber, the Downtown Association, innumerable nonprofits are available to advance these goals. So, not everything needs to be done by the city itself. You can rely on partners, and so, there's this mix of, there are things that you might want to expend the funds directly as part of your annual budget, and then there are funds that you're very likely going to want to grant to others. And deciding that mix is for future conversations. Another key piece that I'll mention before we move on to the expenditure categories is year-round experiences. There's a lot of stuff that can happen in the summertime. That's easy, and we know what those options might be, but how do you create year-round visitor opportunities? And I think that will be something to be thinking about going forward. And then, lastly, the brand identity. I won't be here when the economic development update happens, but there is a lot of common themes that have been emerging from the two workshops. We held them back-to-back in November, and so, I'll just leave it there, that brand, brand identity, and developing that is going to be a recurring concept, I think, that you'll be hearing from staff and others.
Before we go on, would you like to pause and seek our feedback, or would you like to do that at the very end?
At your pleasure, sir.
All right. Counselor, would you like to ask questions or provide comment about the draft vision right now?
We only have a couple of slides left, so I think we're good to go to the end.
But one, the thing they want us feedback is the draft vision, so.
That's true.
Counselor Robbins, since you, thank you for being the counsel liaison on those long meetings I heard, so.
Yes, it was a long meeting, but my picture was on the first slide, so that's okay. My hair looked okay. I think that the draft vision that we came up with, while long, is appropriate. I was a big proponent for kind of year-round experiences and also experiences that are good for residents as well as visitors. You know, I've lived in a place where there was seasonal activities, and if you liked that activity, it was great. If you didn't, and you just wanted to go to work through the terrible traffic, it was terrible. So, I want to make sure that we have balanced activities and events and stuff that's good for everybody. I liked that we were talking about partnership with Explore Tuolton Valley, and also some marketing and identity. That's something that came up a lot, is what does Tigard stand for? What do we want to be known for? And, you know, maybe an idea of like, a lot of eclectic activities, like we have go-kart driving in the balloon festival and a lot of other fun things that you can do here that aren't typical, so.
Any other feedback? Are you okay with?
Yeah, I think it's very, a very thorough draft vision, and I think what I was, what I liked about it is TLT is so strict on what we can use these funds for. I mean, tourism promotion, tourism-related facilities, but I think this, within those strict confines, provides enough of a direction and a vision and sort of inspiration of how we can move forward within these strict guidelines. So, I like it.
Go ahead, Counselor Lucy.
And I agree. In terms of doing exercise, I was like, what would I create as a draft vision? And this ends up being a lot more detailed than I was able to provide on my own, and really, the biggest thing is trying to create that brand identity, because looking five, 10 years down the line, that's what will really matter.
Yeah, for me, I like the year-round experience thing, but I just wonder what that would be in Tigard for year, in the middle of the winter, but that's a challenge we can take on, so that's, so we can talk about that later. And when you talk about balance, I can see what that means, but maybe, I don't need that right now, but maybe a flexible approach as well, because you mentioned that 750 cannot do too much, but at the same time, I believe 2.5%, we can go above that, right? So, once if we identify something, we really want like research, maybe in the Tiger Triangle, maybe we can raise the lodging tax and just really target that, so it doesn't have to be balanced. But again, this vision can be changed later on if we really identify opportunity, but the draft vision, I'm fine with it right now, so. But I just think about, you know, if we found something we really want, maybe the word balance, I mean, flexible maybe will be better. But anyway, okay, so let's move on.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so, the idea behind the spending categories is it's, you have this thorough vision statement, and then, okay, well, then how do you get there? What are the primary buckets of expenditures that will get you? There are the major types of investments. Clearly, always, it must be TLT-eligible. That's the threshold. Once you've passed that question, then is, is it, does it fall into one of these three expenditure categories that I'll share on the next slide? And then, if there are more asks or more options or opportunities than there is available budget, right, then you can move into some of that prioritization, starting with the spending category that is number one. If you, next slide, please. And so, then here are the expenditure priorities. The first is promotion and marketing. And so, this is both city-led efforts as well as those of your partners that attract the visitors by sharing your story, developing that brand that we talked about, promoting events, amenities, and experiences that are really geared at drawing people to Tigard. So, if you talk more with the city attorney, right, sort of where you are marketing matters, right? What are the publications that you are doing your advertising? How are you actually showing that you're trying to reach folks from outside Tigard proper, right? This came up again and again, both in the TLT workshop and then also in the economic development workshop, this idea of what is our brand? How do we share that to others, and in what contexts? I think that Explore Tuolton Valley is an amazing partner, and you can double down on the opportunities there for marketing, as well, of course, the Chamber. Priority two is destination improvements. So, it's enhancements to visitor-serving places that support both access, navigation, and experience of exploring Tigard. So, that could be wayfinding. That could also be trails, particularly trails that are kind of a regional connection, and then, other amenities that you have. And then, finally, priority three is events and entertainment. So, that's programming activities, again, with that emphasis throughout the year, so indoor and outdoor activities by the city, but also with your partners. And again, you're going to want to continue to have conversations with the city attorney about the kinds of events and programming that are TLT-eligible. And it's not, it's not a black and white analysis. There is some gray, but there is a lot you can do to make it much more eligible, and so there's more conversations that can be had in that regard. And I think maybe I'll stop here and get your thoughts on the expenditure priorities.
Counsel validation. Counsel President Wolf.
Cadence, thank you. And so, the, so, trying to stay up here in the visioning, but it's a little bit of a struggle for me because what I'm wondering about is this kind of balance of just thinking big, but I'm also thinking about the Regal Cinema property, this opportunity for private-public partnership and a new facility. What could that be? Is that in the definition, it's, you know, right off I-5, 217? Is there an opportunity to draw? It would not be the, you know, size of research, but that's what I was thinking as well, and yet, that really doesn't show on the priority list. And so, I jump in the weeds to kind of then wonder, well, what would that cost, right? What kind of money would that require, given what we have as already a balance plus where we are now? Or would that have to be increased to really hit something that could impact a facility like that? So, that's where I wrestle with trying to say I support those because I wonder about something bigger that would be in a capital investment, so.
Go ahead first.
Thank you, Counsel President Wolf. We had a very robust conversation about this idea of what a signature facility could look like, whether that be an arts center, a performing arts center, a mixed-use community center. And two of the recurring concerns is the, not just the initial investment cost, but the operating costs. Cadence was one of the primary players in getting Beaverton through the finish line to the Patricia Research Center. It's one of the reasons why we selected Eco as our consultant, because of her experience in, 10 years in Beaverton. The operating costs for a center like that will exceed even our ambitious revenue goals where we're at. So, we would have to be intentional and pursue an increase in our TLT funds, as well as eliminate any other funding option if we were to pursue something like a big facility. The other thing we talked about is capacity. Realistically, over the next couple of years, what is our capacity to do something at that scale? I'm not saying it's off the table, but looking at the development of the framework for how do we invest the TLT funds that we have and we can conservatively forecast, knowing that tourism is down the next couple of years, knowing that we're likely going to see another dip in our TLT revenues, like we, not as severe as we did during the pandemic, but in general, we're not hopeful of the continued upward growth of the revenues based on the tax that we currently have. But that's also not to eliminate something of a major investment. As Cadence pointed out, we have an almost 2 million, over $2 million fund that is yet to be identified for investment. That is a very real possibility to be earmarked for some sort of development that meets that regional threshold at a location like the Tigard Cinema site. Another thing that we talked about, and which is really important for the considerations, is it's not an all or nothing. We talked a lot with city attorney Rahala about partial funding opportunities and the realistic, appropriate use of proportionality and identifying multiple funding source for some of these larger investments. So, absolutely had the conversations, but something like the research center, the group did identify and acknowledge that that's beyond our reach for the next five, 10 years, and that would have to be a significantly larger project and city capacity. And city capacity would probably want to wait until after building a better Tiger to pursue something on that scale.
And I, and that makes sense. I think for me, it's just, I don't know what that could be. But I love the idea of brainstorming, thinking about what that could drive for Tiger. However, that shape, you know, comes forward. But thank you. So this is really more of the, here we bring in 750. This is how the 750 goes out for what we're, okay, thank you.
Also, Council Wolf, right now, you could say that that fits into destination improvements, right?
Yeah, I, I also want to bring that point. I think destination improvement may be a little bit too narrow. So like include enhancement to visitor service place, maybe enhancement and expansion, the word expansion or something like that. I, again, I like the, like the vision statement, I like the word flexibility. Because as Council President Wolf pointed out, I understand the constraint we have. You know, we don't have that much money. But also, we have to be flexible enough to think big if the opportunity shall present itself to us.
I think, I'm sorry, I think maybe a little bit of a clarification too that, that I didn't say at the, at the top, right? And maybe, Danell, you were going to say this at, at the end. But the idea behind the framework is that obviously it will come to you for adoption. But what it does then is it sends a message to staff as they're preparing budgets. So that they have an idea of, of sort of what are the guardrails? What are, what is your guidance to them essentially about what they should come to you with in a proposed budget? So of course, right, as you're setting your priorities, if you want that to shift, then you would shift it. But in, in the absence of specific council direction, right? The vision and these priorities would guide the city manager and staff as they're preparing the draft budget.
That makes sense. And if a council wants something big, obviously we'll do something big.
Go get the money.
So that makes sense. So thank you. Any other comments on the priorities? Are we okay to, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I, just some sort of general thoughts on this. So destination improvements, I support the, the points of the mayor and the council president. That's the one that resonated with me the most. And I think when reading through the entire slide deck, the idea of blending TLT with the general fund activities that indirectly supports tourism and capital improvement projects is more of what I was expecting as ongoing TLT funds as opposed to a specific tourism sort of activity. So I'm just saying that that one resonates with me the most. As far as promotion and marketing, I'm sort of comparing this as someone who wasn't in the TLT workshop but was involved in the, is involved in the Economic Development Workshop where brand identity came up a lot. And I think something I'm just trying to wrap my head around is the idea of brand identity for visitors coming to Tiger versus brand identity for businesses we want to attract to Tiger. Because I don't think those are necessarily the same thing. And I'm, to that end, and this may be just a technical, like we can't do it according to the law. One of the things that did come up in the Economic Development Workshop is that retail, Washington Square is one of the big regional draws for folks to Tiger. And I'm wondering if there is a way we could incorporate retail-related activities into our TLT sort of options, just considering how much of a regional draw that is.
Yeah, so two things, Councilor Schleck. The first is in the vision, we, we do say something about entertainment. I'm not sure what the actual end-up word was, but that was supposed to encompass retail. So you're absolutely right. Yeah, my old eyes are not going to see that.
That's one of the things you can do in the winter is go shopping.
Yes. I, I will also offer that in Washington County, business travel is a significant number of the visitor stays and that business travelers do count as visitors. And so if you are bringing business travelers to the city, you can use transient lodging taxes to support that work. Also, yeah, and that goes to Washington Square Retail, right? They do a lot of marketing outside the region to, to come to the area. It is one of your significant regional draws. I'm not saying that you should be spending money to support marketing for Washington Square, but it is one of those transient lodging taxes eligible expenses.
Cool, thank you.
All right, so do we validate the three priorities? All right, so, okay, so next slide, please.
All right, thank you. Thank you for looking at the draft vision and the priorities. Our next steps and what we would like to do is to take your feedback from this evening and incorporate into the draft of the framework and get that to you via memo through city manager's office no later than mid-December so that you've got some time to look it over, get your feedback to us before New Year's. And then we will bring the draft plan back to you January 13th, looking for any final comments and hopefully adoption, depending on your feedback from the first round. But that's our anticipated timeline is to be able to turn this around pretty quickly for your review via written. And then also will be available for any questions between now and January 13th as well.
Go ahead, Council.
Just real quick, and so just to encourage, I like, and Cadence, you brought it up. As we look to how we spend that money, where that's either within the city of Tiger's staff or with our partners, as much as we can reinvest in our local partners to then help us do that work. I really support that, so thank you.
Any other final comment? See, none, thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for our city partners and staff and Council Robin for participating in the, in the work session. So we look forward to your revision in January. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that was exactly 34 minutes and 40 seconds, so, right on time. All right, so we move on to next item on the agenda item, which is identify finalists for counselor appointment. And Intran City Manager Trish will introduce this item. And I will provide instruction on how the selection process will move forward, so.
Thank you very much, Mayor. With the appointment of you two mayor, it opened up a council seat. And so at the direction of council, we began the work of advertising the vacant council position. We did so online on our socials and then at our different facilities and in our newsletters. We received 14 applications by the deadline of November 20th. And those names are listed on the sheets in front of you. We're looking forward to your guidance as to who will return December 9th for the interviews held by council. As a reminder, we were able to get some questions from community members. To be considered as part of that interview process, eight questions would be identified for the interviews on the 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Intran City Manager Trish. Just to provide a little bit, filling a little bit more information. So we are doing appointment because again, under this Tiger City Charter, a special election is not permitted when the remaining term is less than one year. And also, also another side note, as of the deadline, one applicant, P.R. Wilson-Boddy, did not submit references by the deadline. And another candidate, Glenn Armstrong, did not submit a resume by the deadline, although both provided those materials afterwards. Because references and resume are not part of the legal eligibility requirements, both applicants remain eligible. Each council member may decide how much, if any, way to give to whether materials was submitted on time. So before I, we, we begin, I just want to briefly review the scoring process where we were used to identify our finalists. So I propose two rounds of selection process. In round one, each council member may select three to five applicants to advance to the next round. Every applicant who's selected receives one point. After all selections are submitted and tallied, we will look at how many applicants receive, release at least four votes. Well, actually, why I say that is because I, I was expecting Counselor Shaw to be here. But her, according, she told me that her electricity went out. But she did provide her prior selection to our city recorder, only to them, not to me or anybody else. So City Attorney Rahala said the council may choose to accept her, Counselor Shaw's recommendation if we want to. So does anybody have any problem with accepting Counselor Shaw's recommendation? See, none, so, okay, so, so we will go ahead with our recommendation of Counselor Shaw as part of our consideration. And I'm being presented with a secret ballot. I've never seen this before, I promise. All right, so after all selection was submitted and tallied, we'll look at how many applicants receive at least four votes. If an appropriate number of applicants receive four more votes, I'm thinking maybe three to four candidates, but we can look at it later, we will move those applicants forward and the selection process will be concluded. If there are too many or too few candidates, we will proceed to round two. And the exact cutoff number will be discussed once round one result and compiled. And round two, if we need to get to, to it, let me briefly, briefly mention that. Round two uses a rank choice system. So here's the summary. Each council member will rank their top three applicants. Number one ranking will receive three points. Number two ranking will receive two points. And their number three ranking will receive one point. This ranking point will be added to the applicant's round one point. The highest scoring applicants will advance to the interview round. So again, round two may not be necessary if there's enough consensus in round one. So for round one, each of you already have a city council applicant interview selection worksheet that I asked you, I passed out to you in, in advance. So right now, in section one, please select three, four or five applicants that you wish to advance to the next round. And section B, that's for round two. It may not be necessary, but please still fill in just to save time if we need to go to it. All right, so let's begin with round one. So please fill in the worksheet in front of you. I will give everybody five minutes. So please begin. Do you all fill out already?
Yep.
Okay.
We came prepared.
All right, wonderful. Oh, sorry. Thank you for being so efficient. I appreciate it. All right, so now, so also we have a youth counselor does not. Yeah, you do not get the participation, but you are welcome to follow along and with our scoring sheet. So, and our city, both of our city recorders will also be filling the score sheet. So, so keep us in line. So what I would do is I would call out each candidate. And those of you, and if you want to see that person move forward, please raise your hand, okay? So first applicant, Matthew Albertson's. Those who want to see him move forward, please raise your hand. Where's Counselor Shaw's? Can you do, can you, yeah, okay. Counselor Robin will help with. All right, so next person, next candidate is Tom Anderson's. Those wishing, Tom Anderson, raise your hand. So we have three votes for Tom Anderson. So it's Counselor Goodusy with check. Counselor Robbins and Counselor Shaw. All right. So youth counselor now will have. Oh, we raised for Shaw, but yeah, that's better, that's less confusing, okay. Armstrong. Goodhouse. Counselor Goodusy. And Counselor Shaw, right, okay. Jana Gutierrez. Hadadi. We have Counselor Goodusy and Counsel President Wolf and, and Counselor Robbins. And Shaw, okay. Kaufman. None. Martinez. None. Palacios. None. Ristau. We have counsel, I have Mayor Hu, Counsel President Wolf, Counselor Schleck, Counselor Shaw. No, Counselor Robin, right? Counselor Goodusy? Yes, okay, all right. Shpact. Dali, no, okay. Gabriel. All right, so Mayor Hu, Counsel President Wolf, Schleck and Robbins. Benjamin Wells. Just me. I'm the council president. So P.R. Wilson-Boddy. So it's everybody?
That was everybody?
Yeah. All right, so let me go ahead and confirm. Let me confirm. So Anderson's three. Okay, okay, all right. So let, let me just confirm. Albertson, zero vote. Tom Anderson, three votes. Armstrong, zero vote. Goodhouse, two votes. Gutierrez, zero votes. Hadadi, four votes. See, Kaufman, zero votes. Kaufman, Levi Kaufman. Martinez, zero votes. Rafael Palacios, zero votes. Kay Ristau, one, two, three, four, five, five votes. Dali Shpact, zero votes. Gabriel Velazquez, one, two, three, four, four votes. Benjamin Wells, two votes. P.R. Wilson-Boddy, six votes. All right, so let's see. This one, this one, this one, this one. So we have exactly four candidates with four votes. Is that right? At least four votes. So looks like the selection process completed. Does anybody have a problem or issue with those four, four candidates? Let me read their name again. Ali Hadadi. Kay Ristau. Gabriel Velazquez. P.R. Wilson-Boddy. So, let's see, anybody receives three votes? So Tom Anderson receives three votes. Does anybody want to discuss about Tom Anderson any further or you're good? Please go ahead, Counsel Goodusy.
One thing that I did note in his application was that he had discussed just running until the election. And his intent was not necessarily to then go for election. One of the concerns would be whoever we end up appointing would then be an incumbent and have that during the election. So I would urge us to move forward with him as well, primarily so that the people can then vote in November.
All right, Counsel Robin.
So that was my thought as well. He did point out two things. One, that he would be able to get up and running and work very quickly because he kind of already knows how council runs. But he would have to meet new people and join this current council and get caught up on current events. But. But it does weigh on me a little bit that we have an election coming up in less than a year now, and whoever we appoint will have an advantage as an incumbent. But that's, you know, Counselor Schleck went through this process and it worked out fine, you know? I mean, so, I can't say that that's a bad way to do it, but it is a lot of power that we may be having. I don't want to sound too arrogant, but it is something to think about if we don't want to pick someone who is an incumbent. That would be an interesting choice. I just questioned, does that mean you want to change and add a vote? Because I didn't have you down as voting for Tom Anderson. So then, doesn't Tom have four?
No, he only has Shaw, Robbins, and Gudusi. His three.
Okay, I was wrong. I'm sorry.
Would you support, I mean, Tom Anderson as a fifth candidate for interview?
No, I would not support that. We agreed to three to four candidates before. We have three to four candidates who have been clearly identified through our process. So, I would prefer to stick with the three to four that we just voted on.
All right, Counselor Preston Wolf?
I'm, I'm fine with that in the perspective of not running again. Would certainly want to clarify, because I think that's what we're thinking if there's an incumbent. But, you know, as many of counselors, current and in the past, have been appointed and gone on to have to complete an election, and so, that's not unique per se. And I also respect the benefit of getting to say you're an incumbent, but I'm completely fine with adding a fifth person personally.
All right, so, I think we will have, so, we will have five people to be interviewed. Anybody else you want to consider? There are two other candidates, John Goodhouse and Benjamin Wells, both received two votes. Do you want to discuss them? Nope? Okay, that's fine. So, we, here we have three votes for Tom Anderson, so, if we add him.
I, I mean, I think the majority of the councils expressed that they would like to interview him.
Right, so.
Despite the rules we agreed to.
All right. All right, so, anybody have a motion to make to advance these five people to be interviewed on the ninth?
Mayor Hu, I have a, because I think we very quickly and efficiently did this process, so thank you for that. But I just wanted to ask, or I'm wondering if any counselor wants to say anything about their framework, their decision-making, or we just move forward? Because I feel like for those just watching, we went and didn't really talk about our whys.
Yeah, there's a discussion after the motion, the second motion, second hour, so. But we can discuss it right now if you want.
Yeah, because that's part of Robert rules, but.
Yeah, but it sounds like you would like to discuss, so please go ahead.
Well, because it's not really discussing the motion as much as my why for how I chose the ones I brought forward.
Please go ahead.
And, and I would hope other counselors would do that, too. I think it's our responsibility to say how we landed where we did.
Yeah, please go ahead.
So, I, I just wanted to say that the criteria that I set up as I reviewed everyone's applications, and thank you, fourteen was fantastic to have so many folks step up and do that. So, my rationale was, what is that? Back to, I think, Counselor Robbins, in that who can hit the ground running with a fundamental knowledge of the city of Tigard, and who is locally engaged? Who is, who is already out connecting with our community and doing great things? Compliments our existing council, prioritizes as we think about what is it we want to accomplish in 12 months? You can go campaign on all great things that you want to do, but, but really, how are we focusing on the next 12 months around council goals and our organizational culture? How is that being addressed? And then, I was curious about how people would address Measure 550, because that's a tricky one. And then, also, just the overall thoughtfulness of how did you put your packet together? How did you present yourself to council? And did you do that effectively in, in an appropriate amount of pages? So, that's my why, and I will hand it off to anybody else who wanted to share.
Anybody wants to share? Counselor Schleck?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to just say, I really appreciate that fourteen people in our community put their hands up to say, I want to help out, I want to serve my community, especially considering some of the turbulent times that we've had. I found that to be very heartening when reading and seeing everyone's genuine interest. But, of course, we have fourteen applicants ultimately for one position, so we have to make some tough decisions. For me, what I was looking for was a professional and well-communicated application. I was looking for someone that I thought demonstrated authenticity in their application, as well as a fresh point of view. I want to be working with someone as a fellow city counselor who wants to be a policymaker, repeat, a policymaker, and will take that role seriously. I also want to appoint someone who I think has the grit to endure the tough days in public office, because it's not all fun up here. Also, someone who has a clear connection to Tigard, to the Tigard community, and ideally, someone that has local government experience, for example, on a city board or committee. And then, someone who shares my priorities of leading by example and getting the essentials right. For those reasons, I supported Kate Ristau, Gabriel Velazquez, and Pia Wilson-Boddy. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gudusi?
Sure. One of the main things that I wanted to look at was continuing to provide balance within our council. I know that some people in the community don't feel completely represented, and I wanted to try to add that voice.
Counselor Robbins, do you have anything else to add?
I think I would echo what everyone else said. First, to have fourteen applicants was amazing. You know, I think at one point, there were two. And so, to then get fourteen is, is really refreshing to see. It was a little overwhelming when I first opened up the packet, but to see so many people who are well-qualified to serve on this board or council, I thought, was really good. And I want to echo Counselor Gudusi that I wanted to try to find a little bit of balance, a little bit of someone who's not just like me, because one of me is probably enough. But also, people who seem to have kind of a good idea about what council can and cannot do. We're supposed to be up at the policy level, so, we can't change some of the things, we cannot solve some of the problems that people are identifying as major problems within the city, and also, people had a good, at least, somewhat good understanding of at least some of the problems or issues that the city faces. Nobody can know everything.
Thank you. And for me, I echo many of my fellow counselors' points, and I appreciate their point as well. But I'm also more of a systematic kind of guy, so I have a matrix of ten factors. Each one, I award ten, maximum 10 points, and for a total possible of 100 points. So, they include relevant experience, communication skills, commitment to transparency, accountability, their leadership skills, their ethical standard, their knowledge of local issues, their problems, problem-solving abilities, their community engagement, inclusivity, vision for the city, and their overall impression from my perspective. And I actually have written a brief note about each one of them under each one of the 10 categories, and I will forward my, all of my notes to our city recorders as a public record. So, anybody who is interested in my view of them, any of the applicant, you can submit a public document request and get those documents. So, sounds like, is that good enough, Counselor Preston Wolf?
Perfect, thank you.
All right, let's go back to the motion. Is there a motion to move these five candidates forward?
Mayor Hu, I move that we interview the five.
I will, please.
The five candidates.
Their names.
Yes, Tom Anderson, Eli Hadadi, Kate Ristau, Gabriel Velazquez, and Pia Wilson-Boddy.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. The motions carry unanimously. And before we move on to the next item, there was a question about what references we would like to see from those five finalists. City Attorney Rahala provided a reference check form used in last year's council appointment process, and you have a copy in front of you. The form includes five questions for each of the references. So, counselors, I have two questions for you. Would you like the finalists to have their references, complete the form in front of you? And if yes, how many references should they provide? Counselor Gudusi?
Yes, and two.
Two, okay. Counselor Schleck?
I have no objections to that.
Counselor Preston Wolf?
I agree, and my only request is, could we say in question one, involved in the community, and then specifically Tigard? Community means a lot of things, so, thank you.
Sounds good. Counselor Robbins, anything else to add? I'm okay with it, so, so, we would like those five questions again from their references, and with the modification, go ahead, two questions.
Thank you, council. And just for clarification for the candidates, if any are listening tonight, we will be contacting them to get a consent form to contact their references, and then to follow up if we don't have contact information. So, we'll go ahead and get started on that.
All right. Interim city manager?
Thank you very much. With consideration for the timing for next week's meeting, I want to recognize that we had planned for 30-minute interviews for each candidate. Having five candidates extends the length of the meeting, unless you desire to have fewer questions or shorter interview time. So, I will leave that to you to direct how you'd like to frame the meeting.
Okay, I think right now, we're planning eight questions.
Okay.
So, one, each one, maybe we'll give them two minutes, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, and so, we'll ask the finalists to, for their consent, to submit a completely referenced form, and we'll set a deadline of noon on December 8th. And instruction will be provided to the finalists. Who will be providing this? City Recorder Crager, would you be providing instructions? And can you do that by the end of tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, so, those, to those five finalists, instructions will be provided to you by the end of tomorrow. So, again, the, the deadline for submitting those references will be noon on December 8th. All right, so, thank you. All right, let's move on to the, our next item, which is the public hearing on discussing the process for hiring an interim city manager. I will open the public hearing. Anyone who may testify by phone, video, or in person, and if you want to testify by phone, please call in now to get in the queue by calling 503-966-4101. And our human resource director, Gomez, will provide the staff report. Welcome.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Laura Gomez. I'm the HR director for the city of Tigard. I'm here tonight to talk about the selection and recruitment process for the interim city manager. As you are aware, city manager Stockwell provided his notice of resignation effective November 18th, and as a result, we need to initiate a recruitment and selection process to identify the next interim city manager as soon as possible. Excuse me, little tired, had a long day. There was an outline that I provided to you in a memo on November 25th that describes some of the details of what we were doing here tonight and this evening. I've presented, provided this presentation as an overview of some of those processes that we talked about in the memo. If you can go to the next slide, please. The agenda includes reviewing the hiring standards and selection criteria, the recruitment process and oversight, and gathering input and allowing opportunity for public comment. Next slide, please. And on this slide, these are the minimum qualifications for the interim city manager that is described in the classification and the specs for this job. And then, the different hiring standards and criteria include the minimum qualifications of a bachelor's degree, 10 years of related experience, five years of experience leading staff, and these are just highlights. These are not all of them, we're comprehensive of all of them. And the knowledge bases that we include are the principles, practices, and processes for effective change management, goal-setting program development, implementation, evaluation, and supervision of staff. Expert with techniques that effectively support the community vendors, contractors, and the city staff. And some of the abilities and skills include providing visionary leadership and guidance and setting clear culture and direction, representing the city and the council in meetings, and acting as the city liaison, interpreting, applying, and ensuring compliance with federal, state, and local guidelines. Like I said, this is just a highlight of a few of those. The next slide, please. The scope of work. I provided in the packet a longer list, a more detailed itemized list of what the scope of work entails. And a high-level review of this, it is that human resources will administer the interim city manager recruitment. The expected scope of work and phase include developing a process timeline, inquiring, understanding, and defining the position profile, the candidate search and evaluation, city council interview selection process, and supporting long-term success for the candidate. The next slide, please. Preliminary draft timeline will seem very quick and aggressive, but I believe we can make this happen. We'll, like we're doing tonight, talking about the recruitment process, posting the job announcement as early as tomorrow, providing a viable candidate list to council by next week, and conducting candidate interviews by mid to late December, and hopefully, hiring or selecting someone will start sometime in January. And the next slide is the staff recommendation. To use the existing hiring standards and qualifications for the interim city manager, incorporating your feedback and council's individual recommendations, using the described scope of work that was attached in the packet, and then authorizing human resources to provide and administer the recruiting selection and hiring process described in the scope of work. So, that was a pretty quick overview, and I hope that you've all had a chance to look at the materials. If not, I am happy to answer any questions and slow down a little bit and explain anything you'd like to hear more about.
Thank you. Counselor, right now, just questions only, please. Go ahead, Counselor Gudusi.
When we're talking about the interim city manager, what is the thought process in terms of timeline? So, is this a one-year interim, or is it longer?
I would, from the feedback and information that I've gathered, at least a year to year and a half, and until we have hired a permanent city manager.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to public testimony. There were no written comments received for this item by noon Monday. And Mr. Stromberg, are there any callers in the queue to testify on this item?
None at this time.
City Recorder Crager, has anyone signed up in person for this to comment?
No one has signed up.
All right, so, no response needed. All right, so, I will close the public hearing on this item, so now it's council, council consideration of the hiring process. Comments, thoughts? Counselor Schleck?
Mayor, I move to adopt the hiring process as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, so the motion was adopted by anonymous vote of the council, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, we have no non-genue items and no exceptions, so, there being no additional items, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, Tiger. Good night, Tigard.